Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome you to Prattville City Council Tuesday, March 17th, 2015, 6:00 PM. City Council meeting. We ask that you stand for the pledge allegiance to the American flag and remain standing for our invocation tonight, given by Councilor LaBoone.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your body, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father would come before you tonight, honored to be here, serving you in this capacity, serving our city. We ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we work together to do what's best in the business of our city. Please help us to make good decisions both now and for the future of our city, and give us the wisdom that we need. And we look up and pray to you for the rest of our leaders, Lord, for our president and vice president, for our governor, and for this board and our mayor, as we work towards the future. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Called this meeting to order. Character trait of money is persuasiveness. Gauntlet vital truths around another's mental roadblocks. This time I ask for approval of minutes. City Council meeting, March 3rd, 2015.
So, may I?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes, signify by raising your right hand. And those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone would like to speak on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand and come to the podium. Yes, ma'am. Come forward.
Name an address.
Yes, as always.
Yeah, John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace. I'm coming before you regarding the resolution on the incentive package for, I've heard different pronunciations, I think it's Fraley. And I have several questions, and I did try to get them answered, but one day does not give you a lot of time. One of the things I wanted to bring up is, in the resolution itself, it says, in fact, I think you have the ones in front of you, and it's on page, the first, well, the resolution itself, in line 32, it says that they approve the company's application for abatement of our all sales use in new manufacturing machinery tax for a period of 10 years. It then goes down and says, "Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the Mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to offer set incentives as specified in the attached Industrial Development Board resolution." So I got a copy of the resolution, and I'm a little bit confused because it seems a little bit different, and I'm wondering if, when you approve this resolution, if these parts of the resolution from the Industrial Development Board is in that? And this is on page one, and it says, "Be it further resolved that at said meeting the board approved the company's application for abatement of all state and local noneducational ad valorem sales, ad valorem taxes, all construction-related transaction taxes, except those levied for educational purposes, and all mortgage and recording taxes for the full 10 years allowed by law." And so I'm wondering, is if what's in this resolution is the same as this, or is this in addition to?
Ms. Finnegan, I would assume that they're one and the same. The wording may be a little different.
Are they, though? That's what I guess I'm trying to find out, because "all sales use in new manufacturing machinery tax" sounds different than what this is.
Okay. Mayor, can you speak to that at this moment, or can you speak to it at another time?
Both.
Please.
Basically, there, what we're doing is approving what the IDB has pulled together there.
Well, I'm just wondering why that just wasn't written in in the body of this, to make it more clear. Do you see where the confusion would be? Because it says, like, the mortgage, it says mortgage and recording taxes and related, all construction-related transactions. And to me, that's different from new manufacturing machinery tax. I'm just confused, because it seems like it's additional stuff, and when you approve that, then you approve this one, so it's much more involved.
Okay. Ms. Finnegan, let me ask that you get with the mayor right after this meeting, and see if you can get those questions answered, okay?
Okay. Continuing on, if I may?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was gotten, I was received, estimated total for the abatement at $218,188 over the 10 years, and asked if that was, like, $21,800 a year. And I'm just surprised that the incentive is that little. I don't want it to be big, but I'm just, after reading all the things that's in the resolution, that it only come to that amount. And am I correct in that, that that's going to be the total amount that the city's going to put in? And also, I've also heard that the county's involved, so what I'd like to know is what the total incentive package is going to be monetarily, if that's possible?
Let me-
Because, like, it just, it doesn't seem to, you know, $218,000 over 10 years just sounds so piddly. And I was reading an OSHA report, they had some major violations, by the way, in case you didn't know. There was a letter dated September 23rd, and it says, cited for repeat and serious safety and health violations. And in it, it says that Fraley is one of the five largest companies in its category, and its operations extend to more than 90 countries on five continents. It also said that it has approximately 160 employees. And I'm just surprised that, you know, this, this small amount, so... Am I mistaken, that this is not the total amount, or is this, this is all the city is going to be putting forward?
We-
I know, I know, I just, I tried, I tried to get answers, I really tried.
Let me just say again, we're probably going to be discussing this further tonight. We do have economic development projects going on, not only with this, but several others, and we're probably going to be going in the executive session to discuss this further.
Okay.
After the executive session, I feel assured that you probably will be, probably will be able to get your answers from the administration.
Okay. Oh, may I go on just a little bit more? And I know you're going into the executive session. If we're abating the $218,000, what do we get from Fraley? Meaning, if we're abating this, what would we be bringing in? I know it said that business license and permit fees are not abated, but what else will we be, we be getting? Don't know.
Again, because of the nature of, you know, confidentiality, once we finish that, what we are getting, I think we'll be able to divulge once we finalize that.
Um, do you know-
We are getting something-
Let me ask you this, do you know what type facility? Is it going to be a new facility? Do you know how many employees it's going to be bringing?
Uh, let me just say, it's an economic development project that probably is going to be an expansion for our new facility.
So, and you have any idea on the employees, the number of employees that might be employed?
I do, but because of what I'm upon the right now, I just can't, you know, all of us are upon confidentiality agreement there.
So, it's all, it's all going to be agreed upon before citizens can then get the information? Is that what I'm understanding?
Um, Ms. Finnegan, most of the time, these economic development projects that I'm aware of, they're usually done, you know, pretty much in-
In secrecy.
In secrecy.
In the executive session, no.
Yeah. I mean, if I stay to figure out here tonight, and someone here is listening from that particular company, they may decide to just forget it, you're not being, you know, confidential.
I, but it makes it very difficult as a citizen and a taxpayer to have any input, or I can give input, but I don't have any of the information, so how can I speak on it? And that's why I brought these questions up.
Uh, again, just let me say, either the administration or possibly your council person can have those answers, once we deliberate again in the executive session, possibly. All I could do is say possibly, because I can't speak for neither one of those parties, but possibly they can give you those.
So, citizens won't have any idea of what's going on until after you've approved it, correct? Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just know that we're going to be giving, you know, there's more and more projects coming up, and, and, you know, I see more and more money being given out as incentives, and I just feel that as a taxpayer, I should be able to have that information and, and know that, and, well, taxpayers as a whole.
Right.
You know?
And I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I believe the administration is open to meeting with you, to give you all of those information.
Mr. President, come.
Ms. Mayor?
If I might, just make one suggestion. The IDB, Industrial Development Board, has several members of the city, of citizens of Prattville, and that their position ever comes open on that, I'd encourage you to, you know, try to sit on that board. Or the Chamber of Commerce has their, has some, several different boards on that, too, so that might be one way for you, for you to be involved.
Yes, it could be. It could be. So I'm not going to be able to get any answers until after the fact.
Not, not right now.
Not right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Mayor, you have a report.
I do, but may you have a court of privilege?
Yes, sir.
Like that, Mr. Chris from Jackson Thornton, and he's going to have to divulge his full name, because I'm not going to attempt to use his last name.
That was your homework assignment.
Well, I, I didn't get that right.
At the last moment, so. Oh, okay. I'll put that in the report.
Okay.
All right.
Can you spell it for us?
Yes, I can, but I'm going to save it to the end.
Okay, well, good.
You can go study, right?
I will.
Thank you for the chance just to come and deliver the audit opinion for the September 30th, 2014 financial statements. We did issue those in the end of February, so the printed financial statements are with Doug, and we can get you a copy of that briefly. I appreciate the chance to come and talk about the financial statements, because it means you care. Certainly, you're bound to have an annual audit. The continuing disclosure rules with bonded debt require that, but, that being said, your interest in that makes me smile as an auditor. I appreciate the cooperation between the mayor, Doug's staff, all of them really participate in the audit. It is a very rigorous process. It involves a lot of testing, vouching, confirmation. It involves compiling these statements and then presenting an audit opinion on them. I don't, I don't, I don't envy your position to try to understand these. I will say that these are some of the most complicated financial statements there are, and it's not because of Prattville, it's because of the accounting rules. The accounting rules can be voluminous for governmental entities, but I want to hit on a couple of highlights here, if you don't mind. Again, appreciate the opportunity. We issued our opinion, and it is a clean opinion, so that's what you're looking for, right? On a full set of financial statements in compliance with the GASB. The GASB is the oversight board that requires this package of reporting, so it is a clean opinion. Certainly, from year to year, we implement new accounting standards, which we did this year, so it did affect opening equity, and we did do that. When you go back and get your statements, and I'll just throw this out here, I shared this with Doug, I'm open anytime to call me at my desk, on my cellphone, send me an email if you have questions about it. Once you're looking at this, some takeaways, some quick takeaways, there's a lot in here, like I said. When you open it up, right behind the table of contents, there is a letter that Doug wrote, and it is a transmittal letter. If you don't like getting caught up in the numbers, it's a good read. It's about four or five pages. Tells you about economic outlook and just an overview of how the city did from a narrative standpoint. From there, you go into a little bit more of a narrative called "discussion and analysis." I like it. Again, Doug and his team wrote that. We do look at it to make sure it matches the financial numbers. What I really like about that section, it gives you comparative numbers. Generally, governmental financial statements are one-year only. So, if I just flip to the page, just to give you some takeaways, how big is the city? Well, on a full accrual basis, about 75 million. That takes into all the receivables, the cash, the fixed assets, all that good stuff. So that's just a number to kind of keep in your mind, 75 million. Yes, you have positive fund balance or net position. That's a good thing, right? So you want to have money after the liabilities are accounted for. Good thing, right? So, how much money did the city either make or lose? On a full accrual basis, it was a little over 7 million. But you really have to take that into perspective with the budget, and that's what a lot of times we, as auditors, measure you by, is your ability to constrain within your budget. So another takeaway, how did you do? You beat it on both sides. So your revenues were greater than what you thought, and your expenses were lower than what you thought. Once again, good thing. You paid your debts. I mean, you paid your debts as they came due, and there is money left over in the bank. Those takeaways there should make you feel good. It should make you have confidence in the ability of the operating team here to take care of those responsibilities. We did carve out a new special revenue fund as a management tool this year. This judicial fund and activities is in its own column, so that's out there. One other number that I like to point out, when you ask, what is the budget, you know, what size is our expenditures, and I'm going to come back to the, the page that's comparative, just a number to, to think about, it's over 35 million, so that gives you an idea of what our spend is every year. The last thing I'll say, again, we issued a clean audit opinion. That's what you're going for, that's what you, or, that's the goal. We did, this year, were required to, the city was required to have a single audit done. Single audits are also called A-133 audits. They're done because the federal government wants you to have them done, because you spent over a certain level of federal dollars. So the single audit was, is virtually complete. Really, it tests your federal programs to make sure you did what you said you were going to do to the federal government, and so we did test the major programs of the government. We're virtually complete, I think that'll be issued in the next day or so, but we did not find any issues, instances of noncompliance. So again, that's what you want, that's what you expect out of your management team here. I know I've kind of covered a lot and a little, and I know we could probably spend a lot more time talking about the, Doug, how many pages do we have? 87 pages here? So I won't go there with you on that, but again, if you, if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to fill them, but I'd be more than happy to come back at any time and to discuss in detail these financial statements. One other thing that I just thought about, enterprise funds, your wastewater, your collections, all that, again, they operated in the black this year, so they, they were profitable to themselves. I missed that point, so I wanted to double back to that. Mayor, did I cover, did I miss anything that you'd like me to cover?
I think the only thing I overlooked in my book was how we controlled some of our costs.
Certainly. That was one of the things that we talked about in our exit. Certainly, you can fix a lot of things by raising taxes. I mean, that's, that's easy, that's easy, but did you grow into that revenue stream? And it is obvious and apparent to me, after you look at these statements, that you did not grow into it. You have held back, and that's why you ended the year with a $7 million net income on a full accrual basis, because you did not spend out those extra revenues and have set them aside to make investments in the future or to pay the debts as they come due. So the constraint has continued, and it's, you'll look at the statements and see it, because it'll be same as last year, for the most part, on the line-by-line, by functional basis within the departments. So yes, good point. We talked about that in detail.
Thank you. I'm going to try to tackle that name.
All right.
Is it Newswanda?
It's Newen-
New-
Mr. Chris Newen Swanda. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Newen Swanda, from Jackson Thorne.
That's right.
Does any council member have any questions or comment for Mr. Newen Swanda? Thank you for a job well done, and the council looks forward to receiving those packs. Mayor, thank you also.
And I applaud Doug and his department, they, they work hard at this. This is not an easy thing to get, get done and out the door, and we've done it, I think as quick as probably we've gotten it done in a few years, so applaud them and their department.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. We thank all the employees, it's not good, it's, it's hard to do what we're trying to do, economic development, payroll, infrastructure upgrades, and still have money. I did hear that, so that is a good thing, so somebody's trying somewhere. We don't get it right all the time, but we're still trying to do so. Mayor, you may continue with your report.
Well, thank you. And, you know, after that report and talking about being able to control some of our spending and our cost, I want to thank the department heads here behind me, because without their, their hard work and their, their level of professionalism, that would not have been a part of the audit there, so I want to thank them. I want to thank you guys for everything that you have done, and also the citizens of Prattville, who have put some confidence in, in this body before me. But, but as you guys were coming in, I hope you noticed or heard the sounds of progress over at the museum next to City Hall, thanks to Joel Duke and Trace Lane, their hard work on getting some grant applications, and thank you to this body for approving the fund for this project, but have a new roof put on over there, and we have so many other projects that will be like this for this fiscal year. You know, it's amazing, we're already halfway through this budget year. Some projects have been started and completed, while others will be coming before this body in the near future. As you know, Child's Place is getting a facelift this week, Parks and Recreation along with facilities, it's been, been hard at work prepping the area and painting while the contract replaced the wall, clay surfaces. Also, I wanted to acknowledge that Fire Sergeant Matt Harden and Captain Travis Rude volunteered their time to help with this project. We appreciate their community spirit and hard work. City Engineer Robbie Anderson, his crew's been working to improve the grove before the farmers market opens for this season. Gives me great pleasure to announce that Assistant Chief Diane Hamm has been selected to attend the FBI Academy. She'll be the first Prattville officer to have attended that. Just another tidbit of good news there. But I want to say thank you to those who have joined me at the Fountain City Arts Festival Dinner last Saturday night. It was a great event honoring the swampers and the music show, Sound Studio. I hope you enjoyed yourselves as much as I did. Thank you to Kelly Cook and Barbara Simpson for their hard work in making Prattville shine with that event. On our agenda tonight, I'd like to ask that you please move forward on, on a housekeeping item, which is number three on the consent agenda. This item reviews, renews the levy of seven mils ad valorem. This is not anything new, it's just where we have to do the general housekeeping once a year on that. As you know, this is not an increase, but a renewal, which is currently on the books, need to reemphasize that many times as, as I can. But item three on the regular agenda is to support a project being led by the Chamber of Commerce and Industrial Development Board. IDB has carefully considered this project, and I concur that this, this is in the best interests of the City of Prattville, so please move Prattville forward with this project. After our last council meeting, a team consisting of Counselor Striplin, Economic Developer Amy Branham, City Planner Joel Duke, Finance Director Doug Mosley, myself traveled to Washington, DC, to meet with Senator Shelby in sessions, as well as Representative Roby regarding projects that serve our community well. Received positive feedback from key personnel, look forward to working with them in the hopes of moving these projects forward. Lastly, I hope that you join me in North Highland Fund Day, the 21st. I'll be there at 11, but I don't think it really starts until a little bit after that. Mr. Woods can reiterate on that, if you don't mind. But also Pratt Park on March 28th for Fountain City Arts Festival. Just a few items that has been going on in and around the City of Prattville. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. This time, we have reports from the council and special committee. Counselor Striplin.
No, sir.
Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir. The Judicial Committee met today at, at 5:00, and we discussed the contract with the Judicial Correctional Services Incorporated, and I'll bring that up later on in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whiteside.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir.
That, we have a report on the status of the city finances from our finance director.
First of all, let me say, on the audit, I'll be sending electronic copy to everyone tomorrow, and I'll have a hard copy in your box in the mailroom in there. Okay, on to the financial report for February. The first sheet in the packet is the revenue report. You'll see that the total revenue for the month of February is up 5.95% from last year at this point, which represents $934,000. You'll notice most everything is up as far as line-by-line, so that's very, very positive, heading in the right direction. The next sheet in your packet is the monthly tax breakdown comparison, showing line-by-line what taxes and how they did, the different taxes and how they did for the month of February. Also, very positive trends on those. The next set of sheets in your packet is the expense report for the month of February. You'll notice that we are 41.67% through the year as far as the expenses are concerned. Most everyone is running right in line where they should be, there are a couple of outliers, but those are very few and far between. The next sheet in the packet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. You'll notice that they are running right in line where they should be as far as revenue is concerned. Expenses on paper look a little bit higher, but that's just because we repaid a bond early on that. The next sheet in the packet is sanitation enterprise fund. You'll see that they are running, also running right in line where they should be in the year. They have received 33.36% of their budgeted revenues and only spent 36.15% of their budgeted expenses. The next sheet is the judicial special revenue fund. They are pretty close to where they should be in the year, and you'll notice that there are $40,000 worth of, worth of dollars that are still in suspense accounts waiting to be broken out. The next sheet is the bank account balances report, which shows the total of all city funds at the end of February is, was $17,642,987. And you will notice, next sheet in the packet is the council accounts payable balances report, which shows the total of all accounts payable and city debt at the end of February was $41,819,000.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Everyone has had the opportunity, I'm sure, to review these prior to this meeting, but if there are any questions or comments at this time, from anyone? Counselor.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but the news is here, and I'm hoping he's paying attention. So I'm going to ask this question one more time. Do we, we have a debt service payment in May?
Correct.
Do we have the funds in cash to pay that debt service?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
We're going to our agenda tonight. We do have a consent agenda, we have three items on the consent agenda. Resolution number one is to appoint Eleanor Ballow as a director to the Tarver County Public Education Cooperative District. Resolution number two is to set a public hearing to declare various weeded laws to be a public nuisance and order an abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Resolution number three is to ratify and affirm the renewal of the levy of seven mils ad valorem tax in the City of Prattville. We have a motion to place these three items on a consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And these three items have been placed on a consent agenda. Have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
No.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on either one of these three items. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda is now adopted. Our next agenda item is a resolution to release funds for the purchase of one lone wolf 25-foot trailer from Prattville Outdoors for the Parks and Recreation Department that accounts not to exceed $3,790. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville- Excuse me. Whereas the City of Prattville has a need to purchase one lone wolf 25-foot trailer for the Parks and Rec Department, and whereas said trailer is available from Prattville Outdoors at a cost not to exceed $3,790, and whereas said trailer is a budgeted expense for the Parks and Rec Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $3,790 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Prattville Outdoors, and funds are approved and appropriated from that fiscal year 2015 budget line item, Parks and Rec Department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor- We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will be any discussion on this resolution. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution is adopted. Resolution number two is to release funds for the purchase of one John Deere 1200A bunker and field rake from Beard Equipment Company for the Parks and Recreation Department that are caused not to exceed $12,810. Councilor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville has a need to purchase one John Deere 1200A bunker and field rake for the Parks and Rec Department, and whereas said rake is available from Beard Equipment Company at a cost not to exceed $12,810, and whereas said rake is a budgeted expense for the Parks and Rec Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $12,810 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Beard Equipment Company, and funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2015 budget line item Parks and Rec Department slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will be any discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this item is adopted. Item number three is a resolution to support the Industrial Development Board's resolution to offer incentives for project friction to attract and retain economic development. Councilor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville works through and with the Industrial Development Board of the City of Prattville to attract and retain economic development, and whereas Brosley North America Incorporated has presented an expansion project to the City of Prattville, which refers to real property and improvements thereon, which is wholly in the corporate limits of the City of Prattville, and the facility will be equipped thereon for use as an industrial facility for manufacturing brake system products. And whereas the IDB has adopted a resolution approving incentives for project friction for the purpose of economic development in the City of Prattville, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville concurs that an incentive package be offered and hereby approves the company's application for abatement of all sales, use, and new manufacturing machinery tax for a period of 10 years. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to offer said incentives as specified in the attached Industrial Development Board resolution. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will be any discussion on this item.
Ms. Finnegan brought up a good point. I think it would be beneficial to amend this, to take out as specified on line 40, as specified in the attached Industrial Board Resolution. Delete that, because you're not giving the same incentives they are, so I would recommend you.
Say that again.
Delete, have someone, now that it's been properly introduced, just amend it to delete on line 40, as specified in the attached Industrial Development Board Resolution.
On the advice of our city attorney, council member will make that motion.
I'd like to make a motion on line 40 to amend, to take out the verbiage as specified in attachment Industrial Development Board Resolution.
You have a motion to amend, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be any discussion on the amended motion. All in favor of the amendment, signify by raising your right hand, and amended motion passes. Will be any further discussion on this resolution. All in favor of adoption of this resolution, signify by raising your right hand, and the resolution is adopted. Number four is an ordinance to surplus various equipment and one vehicle from the police department. Councilor Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama's follows, that the equipment listed in attachment A, vehicle listed below, are hereby declared surplus of the police department and to be removed from the inventory of said department. 1999 Ford Crown Victoria, department number 08-105. Be it further ordained, the City Council instructs the mayor to set said equipment and vehicle on govsteel.com, and the proceeds be deposited into the general fund. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for this item to be hurried tonight, rules must be suspended unanimously. We have a motion to suspend the rule.
So moved.
We have a motion to suspend, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rule, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have now been suspended. Will be any discussion on this ordinance. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. Do we have anything further from any council members?
Yes, sir, I'd like to present a resolution from the floor.
Yes, sir.
Whereas the city of Prattville entered to an agreement with Judicial Correctional Services Incorporated for probation services within Prattville Municipal Court on 21st day of October 2008, whereas the agreement allows for termination by either party with a 30-day writ notice, and whereas the city elects to exercise their option to terminate said agreement, now therefore be resolved, the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby exercises their option to terminate the client agreement with Judicial Correctional Services Incorporated. Be further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized and empowered to provide writ notice to Judicial Correctional Services Incorporated of the city's intent to terminate its current contract. So moved, Mr. President.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being a motion, being a resolution that's coming from the floor, did not meet our rules criteria, in order for it to be hurried tonight, the rules must be suspended unanimously. We have a motion to suspend the rule.
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rule, signify by raising your right hand. The rules have now been suspended. Be any discussion on this item. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution is adopted. That exhausts our agenda. As I stated earlier, we do have an item of economic development interest that we need to discuss. First of all, before we get to that, do we have any comments from persons present, if someone else is, Ms. Finnegan?
John Lee Finnegan, 211, Dear Trace, as shown in me coming before you earlier, I really would like to see that at least the agenda goes back to being online on Friday, so that it gives us time to look, citizens, because it doesn't go on till 2:00 with the, I mean, after, in the noon time on Monday, with the attachments, and this would give citizens time to look it over and even get with the council people and discuss it, and maybe bring something, you know, to their attention that might be very helpful in making a decision. But right now, we don't see the, at least I don't, unless I'm mistaken, I don't see the agenda until after noon on Monday, and that only gives one day to try to get answers. So, I would like to make that recommendation for you to consider. It was, I believe, that way before, and then when the attachments were put on, then it was moved to in the afternoon of Monday, and that just doesn't give us a lot of time to be able to get answers from individuals before the meeting, and it might save a lot of time of people coming up and asking questions at the council meeting. So, if at least put it to Friday, so that citizens are able to see what the agenda is going to contain and also what the attachments are.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Finnegan, we'll take that under consideration.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm gonna ask that the council will vote to go into executive session to discuss, as I said, economic development. We'll probably be in there for approximately one hour, and then we'll come back and do our closing comments. We have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of going into executive session, signify by raising your right hand. An executive session. Should be back in approximately one hour, it is 6:41. Clerk showed it is 6:41. We're gonna ask, does someone make a motion that we come out of executive session?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of coming out of the executive session, signify by raising your right hand. Clerk shows 7:25, we out of executive session. At this time, we're gonna have closing comments. Mayor, you have any closing comments? Councilor Striplin.
No, sir.
Councilor Brown.
No, sir.
Councilor Sterns.
No, sir.
Councilor Whiteside.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Bowles.
Let me think about it.
Councilor Boone. Everyone is gone, so I think I've already thanked them. Again, thank you all for all what you do. Again, North Island Park Day is, we're celebrating 25 years. If you guys can come as special guests at 12:30 p.m., if you can, we'll have a special lunch to serve you, appreciate your support. With that being said, the next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 7th, 6:00 p.m. in these council chambers. Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And need this adjourned.